Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. I kindly ask our city clerk to call the city council meeting to order. And she did. Actually, that's my job. Take the roll call.
I'll do that.
Sorry, brother.
All good. Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kosarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor? Swanson?
Here.
Fantastic. I'd like to invite Jean Gaines to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the day of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jean. Item 3, ladies and gentlemen. Public hearings, special items and presentations. Item 3A is a public hearing to approve proposed property tax levy increase for the City of Geneva for 2022. I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Marx makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Kavan. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open, ladies and gentlemen, and here's just a little codicil with respect to why this public hearing is being held. It is to approve a proposed property tax levy increase for the City of Geneva for 2022. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2022 are $6,8238, a 5.51% increase over the previous year. The reason for the proposed increase is to capture the CPI at 5% and the anticipated growth of 0.51%. With that, we entertain anyone who's with us tonight to discuss this matter. This is a public hearing. This matter is not for discussion by the council, but for those joining us this evening for this specific purpose. If there's nobody wishing to address this matter under 3A, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Kosarog makes the motion, Mr. Kilburg, I believe it was, the second. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 The public hearing is closed. Item 3B is a public hearing to approve proposed property tax levy increase for the City of Geneva Special Service Area Number 23, located in the Sunset Meadows subdivision area for the 2022 year. Is there a motion to open that public hearing? Mr. Kosarog makes the motion, and seconded by Mr. Bruno. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public hearing is open, folks, and again, this hearing is to approve a proposed property tax levy increase for the City of Geneva SSA Number 23 for year 2022. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2022 are $2,685, an increase of 131% over the previous year. The reason for the increase is to cover increased costs associated with landscaping and other structural repairs. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to this matter concerning SSA Number 23? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Marx makes that motion? Seconded by Mr. Kavan. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. On to item 3C, Mental Health Board Annual Report Presentation. We are delighted to welcome, of course, Madam Chair and the entire Mental Health Board with us this evening. The floor is yours. Chairwoman Shogren.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Women and Men. On behalf of the Geneva Mental Health Board, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm Suzy Shogren. I'm the chairperson of the Mental Health Board, and I'd like to introduce the six other board members. They are Eleanor Hamilton, who's the vice chair, Jean Gaines, Richard Gabriel, Christine Kautz, Susan Finson, and Connie Wagner. Before sharing our report, the Board would like to thank City Administrator Stephanie Dawkins for her timely guidance and expertise, Jean Fornari for her organization and communication skills, and Peter Collins and Kevin Starr for their technology interventions on the Board's behalf, which we often need. This past year, we have been encouraged by how society and our community have seemed to understand the importance of prioritizing mental health needs and the knowledge displayed as stigma continues to be diminished. In the media, in conversation, and people's actions, there are efforts to assist when someone acknowledges that stress, anxiety, and struggle is affecting their well-being. The cover of your printed material tonight displays photos of the collaborative effort in our community between the high school students' SAD Club members, the middle schools' Leo Club members, and our board members by tying green ribbons of support and writing affirmations to educate and advocate during May Mental Health Month. As a Board, we feel privileged to play a role in supporting residents who find themselves in need at a vulnerable time. Because of the support and financial commitment of the city, there are organizations ready to assist Geneva residents when it's needed most. Our mission statement, goals, and objectives direct our efforts in supporting community mental health through funding, advocacy, and education. This past year, understanding funding to be our primary responsibility, the Board worked to revise its grant application. The change is made to some of the questions encourages more specificity in responses and more detailed fiscal transparency. At the Mental Health Board's November meeting, through the grant funding process, 13 different service providers received a total of $177,000 in grant funds. They are the Association of Individual Development, Day One Pact, Eckerd Center for Behavioral Health, Elder Day, Fox Valley Hands of Hope, Fox Valley Special Recreation Association, Horsepower Therapeutic, the Joshua Tree Community, Lazarus House, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Second Act Scene Two, Suicide Prevention Services, and Tri-City Family Services. As we have emerged from the pandemic, these organizations have worked tirelessly to provide desperately needed support to families and individuals. Changes, excuse me, challenge still exists for providers in multiple forms, but they continue to be a reliable source of help when need is present. At this time, we would like to share with you messages from three of the providers, allowing you to hear firsthand the valuable work that they do in our community. So Chris Kautz is coming forward.
Welcome, Commissioner Kautz.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. So I'm going to read to you a letter submitted by Amy Singer, who is the founder of the Joshua Tree. And Amy states, "I started the Joshua Tree community in 2014 with the passion and the drive to improve the lives of intellectually disabled individuals who have aged out of public schools. I spent 23 years working in the public school system, and I was disheartened to learn that many of my students were in danger of losing the skills that they had acquired after they aged out of school. I decided to leave the public schools and pursue building a community of volunteers, members, and donors, all of whom are committed to enriching the lives of adults with intellectual disabilities. The Joshua Tree community is named after my brother, Joshua, Joshua Sherman, who passed away in 2003 from cancer. His legacy is the one I want to pass on to the members of the Joshua Tree community, and that is to make an impact, to live and to be loved by others, by the community, and by ourselves. The Joshua Tree became our symbol because of my brother, Joshua, because, but also because the meaning of the tree itself. It grows at a slower pace than other trees, but it has an extensive root system that stretches far underground, and it's the roots that make an unfaltering and steadfast part of its environment. We are the Joshua Tree community. The members may grow at a different pace than others, but they are strongly rooted in the community. We opened our doors in April of 2014 at St. Mark's Episcopal Church in Geneva. St. Mark's gave Joshua Tree the space at no cost for six years, and we started using the Ride-In Cane Ride Share program at that time. We did a major fundraiser to help purchase our own transit van, and this was done through the help of the Geneva Community Chest, Geneva Mental Health Board, Hanson Furnace Foundation, and other generous donors. The equipment, this equipped us with what we needed to be more involved in the community, and we used our local library, we went to local restaurants, park districts, other buildings, and more. During the months that followed COVID, our team, my son and I, at the Joshua Tree, worked hard to create a Google Classroom, a virtual classroom, and hosting biweekly Zoom meetings with our participants. Once we found out that the church, St. Mark's, did not have working air conditioning, we worked tirelessly to find a new location. I continued to search for an outdoor space or our space that we could call home. I read in the Chronicle in mid-July 2020 that the Cane County Cougars were not going to be allowed to reopen for the season. I know that was a bummer to you, Kevin, sorry. And they were completely taken by surprise. I reached out to Vice President and General Manager Curtis Hogg through a phone call and email. He answered rather quickly with an appointment time to come and see the space the following week, and we agreed on a rent. So in summation, they've been at the Cougars ever since. They were on the rooftop at first, and then she created a curriculum that was, in a sense, trying to focus more on being more of a classroom than just a day program. And they've always had rules, she says, for their participants, like no throwing up in the van, no laughing in the van, no yawning in the van, and no belching in the van. But she was, she said, "But now, as I was reading on the rooftops at the Cougars game, no, there's no tolerance for dropping things over the railing," and their new favorite phrase is, "There's no crying in baseball." So they moved inside to the suites in October. I'm trying to speed this up a little bit. And they moved to having all-day sessions and half-day sessions. So as we continued to search for our own home, I reached out to Mr. Hogg again in February of 2021, letting him know that I thought we found a place, and if it was possible, we might stay at the Cougar Stadium until April. And he said, "I was thinking yesterday that we could even try to provide you a permanent home here if you want to discuss it." He assured me that it was based on providing a safe, secure, and fun environment for us to function. So that has taken them to today, where they have their permanent home now at the Cougars with outdoor space in the, in the weather, when the weather's permitting, and then the inside space at the suites afterwards. And I just want to say that thank you to this council. We were able to award the Joshua Tree $7,600, which was their full request this year. They provide over 5,000 hours of community help to those adults with intellectual needs, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of Joshua Tree.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Eleanor Hamilton, and I'm sharing information from Sarah Gray. She is the executive director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness Local Affiliate, shortened to NAMI-KDK, National Association, National Alliance on Mental Illness. They serve Southern Caim, DeKalb, and Kendall Counties. NAMI is the largest grassroots mental health organization in the U.S., serving youth through seniors. NAMI-KDK's mission is to provide free mental health support, education, and advocacy for individuals, family members, and community members. They provide information on community mental health treatment resources, they offer support groups, and they give community mental health presentations. Services are provided through a peer-based model, which research has shown to be effective. All of the staff, interns, and community volunteers are peers. All services are provided free, and there are no eligibility requirements. NAMI-KDK is funded by grants and donations. Support groups are held in person and virtually. Their current goal is to build on and expand their current programming in order to address increased community needs. Thank you for your support, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Susan Finson, and I am reading a letter from Fox Valley Hands of Hope. When Christine lost her mother back in 2012, she turned to Fox Valley Hands of Hope for support. Six years later, she lost her husband tragically and unexpectedly. Christine and her children were left feeling shocked, depressed, and struggled to cope. Remembering her time spent with Fox Valley Hands of Hope when her mother passed away, Christine reached out again for help. Fox Valley Hands of Hope embraced Christine and her children and invited them to participate in our Grief Takes a Hike family camp. We helped her navigate her grief feelings and instilled positive coping practices for her and her children to use as they continue to live without their precious loved ones. When we asked Christine about her experience with Hands of Hope, she stated, "When we arrived at Grief Takes a Hike, the warmth, compassion, empathy, understanding, and genuine nature of all the staff made us feel unbelievable. The kids smiled and laughed, which I had not seen in forever. It was beautiful, and I left feeling like I could breathe." Fox Valley Hands of Hope provides compassionate guidance and support to the grieving at no cost to clients. Maintaining a no-cost service model is important because the financial burden of care can be a significant barrier to people who need help. Oftentimes, people attribute grief to a single moment. However, that painful feeling can last a lifetime. Losing a loved one is not something that someone will simply get over. Instead, grief is a journey that will be difficult at times and easier in others. Current research conducted by the JAG Institute found that 5 million children in the U.S. are currently grieving. Children who are unsupported in the early stages of grief can develop serious behavioral problems and difficulty in school. The Clinical Psychology Review found that 25% of adult grief sufferers develop depressive disorders in the aftermath or anticipation of loss. These disorders can lead to problems with relationships, substance abuse, failure of careers, and uncomfortable end-of-life experiences. Fox Valley Hands of Hope values compassion, guidance, and the strength of hope. They believe that walking alongside our clients through their grief passage will empower them to work through their losses productively. Healing takes place in the context of relationships and community. Therefore, Fox Valley Hands of Hope provides that safe space for people to establish those connections. Since Fox Valley Hands of Hope understands that grief can be an ever-present factor in people's lives after a loss, they strive to help our clients identify positive relationships and personal tools to help them in the difficult moments. Fox Valley Hands of Hope can make a positive impact on grieving thanks to the generous funding partners like the Geneva 708 Mental Health Board. Without the dedicated efforts of community members, Fox Valley Hands of Hope would not be able to serve the number of quality, no-cost programs that they do. The Geneva Mental Health Board specifically has not only been a generous monetary funder, but also generous with their time and attention to the needs of Geneva residents. We are truly grateful for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perhaps the words of Mr. Rogers serves to remind all of us what is most important in community, and I quote, "All of us at some time or another need help. Whether we're giving or receiving help, each one of us has something valuable to bring to this world. That's one of the things that connect us as neighbors. In our own way, each one of us is a giver and receiver," end quote. In summary, the Mental Health Board is grateful for the city council's giver-receiver role. Our community is fortunate to have within its boundaries service providers that can be accessed, leadership that supports, and neighbors that are willing to lend a hand. As we have heard, these neighbors show up in various forms, and sometimes in the most unlikely of ways. Geneva is fortunate to experience support in the form of a professional baseball organization that wanted to include and thus became part of an extensive root system, in the form of the largest grassroots mental health organization and its numerous support groups, and in the form of an organization who invited a family to camp and allowed a mom to breathe again as she navigates her grief journey through compassionate connection. While there is still much work to be done to bring wellness to people in mental health crisis, the Geneva community has many resources to offer those who need a pathway to healing. And we thank you all.
Beautiful presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll open the floor to the council members. Is there any questions for Madam Chair or any members of the Mental Health Board?
Just a comment. I want to thank the commission, obviously, your oversight and the time that you commit to this is fantastic. I think it should give assurances to taxpayers that these dollars, tax dollars, are being directed to those organizations in our immediate community that are there to serve and really help improve the quality of life of our community. So with that, I want to thank you and the fine job that you've done.
Thanks. It's our privilege.
Well said. Anyone else? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Always good to see you guys. Thank you all. It's my pleasure to welcome Chairman Vitang to the podium for the Art on Fire Award Presentations. And we have two award recipients here tonight, at least two. First prize is a weekend for two at Pheasant Run. Second prize is a week at Pheasant Run.
The mayor will bring the tent.
Yeah. I know, I didn't.
It's a pleasure to come before you again. This is a program that creates a lot of fun in the community. And just to introduce you, tell you a little bit about it, let me turn this thing on. Let's see here. Oh. Okay. Nope, wrong one. This is the eighth year for the program. It's open to all artists, not just Geneva residents. There's no age restrictions. The rough criteria is you pick a hydrant that's not been painted before, submit your design by the deadline, and the city will review it and let you know if it meets the requirements. The main requirement is that it not be all black or camouflaged, because we do want the fire department to be able to find it in an emergency. There's over 1,500 fire hydrants in the community, so this program can go on for quite a few years. We'd love to see all of them painted. This is the, as I said, the eighth year, and there's over 120 hydrants that have been painted. While there are many of them are in the center of town, you can find them throughout Geneva. There's an updated map with photos and directions available on the city's website. I'd like to give a special thanks to Kate Tracy in Economic Development. This was one of the things she was tasked with doing, was to getting everything updated, making sure the information was put out, and the artists got their fire hydrants painted in a timely manner. So it took a lot of work to get it all done. This year, we were pleased to see the International Cultural Exchange Committee was interested in doing a special edition to our program. And to tell you a little bit about that, I'd like to have Cynthia Albright come up to the podium.
Thanks, Tim.
Hi, Cynthia.
Mayor Burns and city council members. So I am here to represent the International Cultural Exchange Committee. We had decided during one of our meetings that we are always trying to reach out to other members of our community. We've had some success in sponsoring projects with high school students, grade school students, but kind of missing that in-between. And when we realized that this hydrant painting contest would be really an ideal one for middle school students to design and actually execute their design, we thought this was a great way to get some information through the art teachers into the schools, into the Geneva middle schools. And so I reached out to Tim Vitang, who has been chair of this program for a very long time, and Ben McCready, our assistant city administrator, and helped coordinate and how we were going to fit in, because we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We basically had to fit in to the existing program and put out information to middle school students that would encourage them to consider a design and one of the themes that promotes what we find as our mission, and that is to promote international friendship and to celebrate the 15 years of friendship and partnership we've had with the city of Croissy-Sirsen in France. And I am proud to present to you this evening the recipient for our category, which was executed by Amelia Amaya, who is here this evening. Amelia and her proud parents, Carrie Amaya and Luis Amaya. Would you like to step forward?
Amelia, come on up.
And Amelia is now a seventh grader at Geneva Middle School North, right?
Yeah.
And she obviously spent a lot of time
Indeed.
deciding what she was going to use for this design. Would you like to tell us a bit about that?
Um, well...
Just step a little closer.
I wanted to connect, like, the similarities between the two places, and they're both outside of a big city. The Croissy-Sirsen
Oh, absolutely.
is outside of Paris, and Geneva's outside of Chicago, and they both have, like, a river that's, like, right across it, so I wanted to connect it like that.
Is this fire hydrant close to your home? Life is good. And you did this all by yourself?
Uh, my sister helped me a little bit.
Oh, yeah? Is the sister at home watching?
Uh, no.
So she only helped a little bit, right? It's beautifully done. And how long did it take you?
It took me about two days.
No kidding? Two days? And the weather cooperated while you were out there?
It was really hot, so...
Was it really? Well, I think...
That's where Mom and Dad came in.
That's where Mom and Dad came in? Yeah. Oh, my. Wow. And forgive me for not being able to see it clearly myself, but multiple colors, correct?
Yes.
Did you have to, like, redo any parts, or was it all perfect the first time?
I had to go over it a couple times.
And I bet you've had a lot of praise regarding your talented design.
Yeah.
Wow. And why the Great Getaway?
Um, because Geneva and Croissy-Sirsen both have, like, landmarks and are cool cities. And while researching, I thought that could be a good name.
Well, that's wonderful. Do you know what you received tonight for winning?
No.
Two tickets to Croissy. No, not really. So we're very proud of you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, the floor is open if you'd like to ask our artists anything. Ms. Burkhardt?
This is so beautiful. I want to go see it in person. Can you, we can't all see because of the photo, but can you just tell us some of the things you painted up there?
Um, I painted the Geneva windmill, and there's a chateau in the city in France. And then I drew both of the skylines of Chicago and Paris and put the flags of the U.S., France, and then the Geneva flag, and then the Croissy-Sirsen crest.
It's so thoughtfully done. It's beautiful, so really good work.
Very cool. Anyone else?
Did we have other entries as well in this category?
We did not.
Oh, okay.
But we hope this inspires other youngsters.
Yes, that's great, yeah.
Plenty of them could have qualified for this category, but it was Amelia who stepped forward.
Well, obviously, yeah.
You really did a lot of research. You can tell that.
Great job.
You're displaying the flags and the city seal and something iconic from each of these towns. And this fall, when our French visitors were here, Johnny Garner
That's right.
presented Amelia with awards. You have a beautiful Impressionist jigsaw puzzle. Did you put that together yet? Wow, okay. I think it was, like, 500 pieces. That's pretty challenging. So we're very, very proud of Amelia stepping forward
Indeed, we are.
...making this a very, very special occasion.
Can you see the fire hydrant from your house?
No.
No? Okay, so you don't sit in your window and keep an eye on it? Well, beautifully done. We're very proud of you.
So, and we would like to present to you Amelia on behalf of ICEC, something that will help to make your Christmas a little bit more special.
Ah.
And please, parents, if you would, please step up here. Carrie and Luis Amaya.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping her
No, thank you.
and inspiring her, I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you.
When Cynthia and I spoke about it, it just became a natural that this is just a perfect addition to the program, and we hope to see it continue, and we'll definitely have to work to have it grow for future years. And having the French be involved was a nice addition. So we have... Let me get that. Each year, the Cultural Arts Commission and the Public Art Advisory Committee review all the newly painted fire hydrants, and we pick the favorites. There were three hydrants that got the most votes, and they'll receive Geneva gift certificates. Tonight, we'd like to introduce the three vote get, the three top vote-getters. After I do, after I introduce each one, you're welcome to come to the podium and tell us about your inspiration, and there'll be an opportunity for photos. So in third place, located at the southwest corner of Second and Hamilton, we have Boba Fett, Litterbug Bounty Hunter. And the artist is Ethan Ellermeyer and his grandmother Carol. So would you come to the podium?
Isn't that something?
I know Ethan's grandfather's here, and his parents are also in the audience.
Ethan, I just learned that Boba Fett is a Star Wars reference?
Yeah.
Did anyone else know that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. The city attorney said, "I had no idea." That's so cool.
Yeah. Me.
I really gotta get out more, man. It's like...
You're too, you're too young.
Yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, sure. This is cool. Grandson and grandma duo.
Yes.
Wow. Well, the floor is yours. What inspired you to create something? I had no idea what it was.
My dad really likes Star Wars, so...
Ah.
His favorite character, I actually think it's Darth Vader, but he also likes Boba Fett, so we did Boba Fett as one of the fire hydrants.
Yeah, you could do a water tower Chewbacca.
Yeah.
Cool. Wouldn't that be awesome? Yeah.
We learned how many different types of fire hydrants there are in Geneva.
Ah, yeah, there's a lot. There's a lot. What grade are you in, sir?
Six.
And what school?
Uh, Geneva Middle School, the North.
Oh, so you're both Northies. Life is good. You have a new principal, Mr. Carley.
Yeah.
How's he treating you? Well?
Yeah.
That's good. Well, you know, principals, what the heck. So how long did this take you and Grandma?
Probably like a week because of the hot weather.
Yeah, we have an issue here with hot weather, don't we, on that, the fire hydrant thing? Now, you and Grandma worked together.
Yeah.
Did you keep an eye on Grandma, or did Grandma keep an eye on you?
Um, she, yeah, yeah.
Careful how you answer that.
No, he's very particular about where certain things should be placed and how they go, and colors and those sorts of things, so we work together. But it's his design specifically.
Very cool. And so you mapped it all out on paper, then you just
Yeah.
transpose it. It took you about a week.
Yeah.
Any redos?
Uh, well, no.
No, that's cool, man.
We did do some redos, outlining, basically.
Oh, sure.
But, yeah.
All your friends have seen it?
No, none of them have.
What? You're kidding, really?
No, they don't, I don't think they look at fire hydrants.
Some of my cool friends who got this. You need to get a picture with it.
Yeah, it's, it's cool.
It is very cool. You know, after the contest, you can actually take that fire hydrant home. Is this close to your home?
Uh, it's like half a mile.
Okay.
Like quarter mile, yeah. It's not that, it's pretty far away.
There's a fire hydrant right across the street that we tried to talk him into, but he wanted one that was high visibility.
Oh, wow. Smart move, man. Marketing, one-on-one. I like it. Are you thinking of participating next year?
Uh, maybe, I don't know. I don't have a very good idea. Maybe I'll do another Star Wars-related one.
Would you hire Grandma again?
Yeah.
And I trust you paid her well?
No, I didn't pay her well. I didn't pay her anything, actually.
Well, you guys are very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Vitang has something for you as well. And, oh, excuse me, I'll open it up to the council. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Anyone from the council? Any comments on what I had no idea Boba Fett was? I have never heard that phrase before. I thought it was like a croissant.
Boba Fett was sort of an interesting character in Star Wars. What, how did you capture this seemly dude?
Uh, yeah, we, it took us a long time to do the helmet because we didn't know how we'd do it.
The shape of the fire hydrant doesn't really lend itself...
No, it sort of be, it should be elongated, I think.
Yeah, and that's why we needed to find the right shape for one.
And there weren't any.
So I've been advised that Boba was the guy that captured Han Solo?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't watch Star Wars.
Why am I drilling this kid?
Yeah.
Where's Dad?
So he was actually worried about...
Okay, come on up here, Dad. Dad?
No, no kidding.
Oh, my God, he does look like Darth Vader.
He was worried about Disney coming after him, and so he came up with this whole Boba Fett.
By the way, edit this tape before he...
As opposed to Boba Fett, he came up with that.
Well, she made the name, so...
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
He didn't want any copyright infringements.
You know Disney, right?
But think of the attention he gets. Wouldn't that be awesome? Wow. So Dad, you're a big Star Wars fan?
Yeah, yeah.
You've seen them all?
Seen them all, mostly. Well, the old ones.
Ethan, you've seen them all?
Haven't seen all the new ones.
But you don't, you don't watch Star Wars, you said?
He's watched some of them.
He's watched some. Grandma?
I don't know what he's talking about.
Yes, the original ones.
The original ones.
Yeah.
Wow, this is really cool. We're proud to see Dad.
Yeah.
That's pretty neat, man.
We're gonna do another one.
Are you gonna do, good, good. Be careful of the copyright infringement.
So I love these people. I'm gonna cry. I've known Ethan since he was a baby.
Oh, my gosh.
And they live next door to each other, so that's how much, like you've got three generations here.
Wait, Grandma, you live next door to these guys?
I do.
It's a tough neighborhood there, Ethan. There's no hiding, man. That's awesome.
And Ethan, you're so, you were such a cool kid. I did, I'm not surprised you're as creative as you are, but this is so fun to see you do this, and what a special memory with your grandmother, who is a former librarian and teacher, is really up on the copyright issues. So I'm glad that you were careful on that, right? And communicator, former communicator, yeah.
Yeah, looking at the fire hydrant, maybe R2D2 might be a good candidate.
Yeah, we were, um, he actually does have an antenna, so like that's kind of how I thought the antenna...
That's R1D1 to you, Mr. Copyright. Mr. Vitang, the floor is yours, sir.
On behalf of the City of Geneva and the Cultural Arts Commission, I'd like to present you with these Geneva gift certificates and a packet of things from the chamber to help you spend the money.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Ethan, just so you know, those gift certificates are to patent attorneys to defend you when you... That's cool stuff, man.
And then we're unable to have our second place winner attend this evening. Way at College, but it's located at the northwest corner of Franklin and Fourth, and it's called Floating on Flowers. And it was by Louisa Lianna and Chara Sertz. So we'll see they get their gift certificates after the meeting.
So they were seniors in high school when they did this? Very cute.
And then in first place, located at the northeast corner of Sixth and Franklin Streets is Flowers in Bloom. And this was designed and painted by Christine Metoyer, and she texted me about an hour before the meeting and was unable to attend. I'm very sorry she couldn't make it, and I'm sure she'll be even sorrier when she saw
Exactly.
that she got first place. So if you have time, take a look. Just driving by, there's a lot of fire hydrants around the community, and they're starting to show up in the neighborhoods, which is really nice. I do want to mention that each painter buys their own paint and supplies, and when you look around town, the flowers and the year-round plantings you see, this is just another example of the community spirit that's alive in Geneva. And we thank all the artists for their time and their effort in helping make a Geneva community that shows its pride and has fun doing it. So I'll see you all next year.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Amelia and Ethan, if you need to sneak out, we understand, but if you want to stick around for the next six hours for the meeting, that's fine, too, so...
I wasn't very happy.
Isn't he funny? Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council and can be considered enacted upon with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
I believe the motion was from, forgive me, Mr. Bruno, seconded by Mr. Swanson. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
All right. Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kavan?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with 10 votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, or excuse me, nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
All right. The bills total $2,324,201.32.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Mr. Bruno, otherwise known as Housewalk 2022 participant, has approved the bills for payment, which include those listed on our website and in our council packets. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Ms. Burghart makes the second. Any questions, any comments on the bills presented? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kavan?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the municipal bills have been approved. We jump to item 12, folks, since all items under item 11 have been approved through the omnibus. Item 12A, consider ordinance number 2022-60, adding one Class A5 liquor license for Bash Burger and Sushi House. Burger and Sushi, sound like Carol Channing. Burger and Sushi House at 124 West State Street. Is there a motion? Mr. Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Ooh. What do you think, Taylor?
I won't make fun of your Carol Channing reference if you
I know.
You don't know who Boba Fett is.
Then I'll give it to Taylor.
But you make a Carol Channing reference.
There's a motion and a second. Any, any, lighten up, serious up for God's sake. Any, any questions or comments? Ms. Dawkins, do you need to say anything? If not, I say we speed through this before we all start laughing. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, Bash has been granted their A5 liquor license. Item 12B, consider resolution number 2022-102, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to master purchase and sale agreement between the Union Pacific Railroad Company and the city of Geneva. Ms. Burghart makes the motion, Mr. Kosarag makes the second, Ms. Dawkins, the floor is yours.
Okay, so this amendment extends the title, contingency, and survey dates to January 22nd, 2023, as the parties are currently reviewing to ensure their accuracy. In addition, the parties agree that the closing date shall be no earlier than May 1st, 2023, and no later than April 24th, 2024. These dates correspond to the city's fiscal year and provide that closing does not take place until such time as the UPS completed construction near the property, including completion of reconstruction of the parking lots as identified in the third Main Line project. So, again, I would just note, executing the First Amendment just keeps the process going and the due diligence going. Up until closing, there's still no commitment until you actually close on the property.
Any questions for Ms. Dawkins? Mr. Kilburg?
Yeah, are we getting any further clarity on the footprint of the properties?
That's why this date is extended, because we've had the surveys done, and there's still something, we're still trying to feder all of that out. It's not the cleanest, you know, it's not like a square, so, absolutely.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12B has been approved by this council. We jump to item 13, new business and public comment. Anyone joining us this evening? Any comments you wish to share? New business from the dais, anyone and everyone. Floor is yours. Mr. Bruno?
Just a shout out to the chamber for a successful Christmas walk weekend. Weather was favorable, and I think everyone had a good time.
And your party last night was lovely, but you charged us all 20 bucks to come, which I thought was kind of...
You know, gotta buy that decor, yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you for sharing your home. Very cool. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn the council meeting? Mr. Marx makes the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are, anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Give us one minute to transition over to the committee of the whole.
Okay. Along with Alderman Marx, and First Order of Businesses recommends suspending the rules to permit myself, council member Kosarag, to this chair, to the meeting, and to vote on all action items on this agenda. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, you gotta hit both.
There you go. All right. We've got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I abstain. All right. Next is approving the special committee of the whole minutes from November 4th, 2022, and the regular committee of the whole minutes from November 7th, 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Burghart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items of business, consider draft ordinance abating the tax levied for general obligation refunding bonds, Water Works and Sewerage Alternate Revenues Series 2021 in the amount of $2,012,200. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Bruno. And Stephanie?
Sure. So the motion pretty much says it said it all. This is to abate the general obligation refunding bonds, so it will take it off of the property tax bill and require that the bonds are then paid from the user fees from the water and sewer fund. And then we do have Director Cruz with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Any questions? Gabe, you got your light on.
Just getting ready for the roll call vote. I don't I don't I don't have any questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with nine affirmative, or doesn't matter, does it? The votes. It passes. Consider draft X resolution authorizing execution of professional engineering services agreement with Engineering Solutions for Design and Bidding Specifications for Water Treatment Plant HVAC System.
B, we're on B.
B, we're on B?
Go B, yeah.
Oh, my bad. Sorry. Okay. B, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional engineering service agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, Renwick for Required I E P A Water Main Replacement and Lead Water Service Transition Plan at a cost not to exceed $98,750. Moved by Burghart, seconded by Marx.
Okay, so for your consideration this evening is a professional engineering services agreement to assist in providing the planning documents and required lead water service transition plan to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency as required by the Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act. We estimate that there are approximately 900 lead and galvanized water services that will need to be replaced no later than 2027. With us this evening, we do have Superintendent Van Gescum and also Randy Newkirk from H L R to answer any additional questions.
Any questions? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you. This question is for you, Bob. Can you walk us through how many lead service lines have been replaced in the last couple of years with our reimbursement program?
Sure. We're doing about 35 a year, and we've done about two and a half years, so we're right around 80, 85 so far this since we've started the program.
And so for a 15-year program to do the remaining 900, that would be about 60 to 70 per year, so we'd have to double that process.
Correct, correct. And the ones that we're gonna concentrate on replacing through the program, the main program, when we do the water main replacement, is in areas where the water main is at least 100 years old, which isn't a lot of the downtown area.
But we have done some
Yes.
on those as well.
Yes.
And my next question is, it appears that this contract is almost evenly split between replacing the water main and then coming up with the lead service line replacements. And I guess my question is, would we have needed the consultant for this program if we didn't have the water main issue?
Yes, because there's still several things that need to be included with the submission to the I E P A than other than just the simple number of lead or galvanized services. You have to come up with a a plan to show how we're going to pay for it. There's a lot of administration details that need to be included in the plan, so it probably would have been difficult for me to do that on my own without a consultant, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Will this be beneficial as we look to the state for infrastructure funds as it relates to current federal legislation?
Yes. Part of what we're gonna be doing is looking into the loan application, but also any type of principal forgiveness or other funding mechanisms that the state will offer federally or state that will possibly like allow us principal forgiveness or even
So how's our timing as it relates to potentially securing some of that that outside money? Are we?
Randy, do you have a feel on that?
A lot of the allocation of those funds are still probably very much in limbo as as everyone works their way up to the table. And obviously, I think Illinois is probably gonna be probably maybe pretty close to the head of that table. And will will the timing and what we're doing or undertaking here be helpful? I know, obviously, you said yes, but
Yeah, I can I can I'll I'll leave it up to Randy to maybe go into some more details, but I know from looking at the timeline that we have to submit by, we're in good shape that way. We're we're meeting early, as far as I'm concerned, the deadlines compared to maybe some other communities that I've have knowledge of. But maybe Randy can speak on the availability of funding with the state.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much for having me here today, Randy Newkirk. I'm with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick, also a Geneva resident. The City of Geneva is, you know, kind of on the leading edge of municipalities that are going after funding for this. And one of the programs plans that we're gonna be putting together is for the lead service replacement. And that is, you know, kind of how the EPA is giving funds out to communities and the loan forgiveness part of it to replace these lead service lines. So the sooner we're in line for this, you know, the better off we are of getting fully funded for that. So there's many communities that have already gone through this process, and, you know, they've been successful in getting this reimbursement. But I do feel like we're out ahead of this.
One last question as it relates to the study. How comprehensive is this and what percentage do you think that we've identified? I know there was a lengthy listing of streets and and really across all of Geneva. Is that pretty inclusive of where we think we need to be addressing this, or is there other areas of the community maybe that we will identify at some point or through this process or at some process later on?
Sure. We're about 80 to 85% through our inventory of, you know, knowing what service types are out there. The majority of them are in this. I would say, again, we're probably looking at between 85 and 90% are located in these areas in the the older parts of town, in the downtown area. We did do some streets within the last 10 years when we were not required to replace the lead service lines that we need to go back to to replace those lead services, but 80 to 90% are within this area.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
So to date, are are all of these replacements based on property owners filling out requests, or are we doing? Are we being proactive on any of this?
Well, since 2010, when we started the the water meter replacement program to where we put the Radio Read Ertz in along with that, except for the first year, we have been identifying the service material type as we replace the water meter. So we have knowledge of, like I said, 80 to 90% of of the properties in Geneva that have lead services. So I'm sorry, did I?
Well, so so I know online there's, which I haven't filled mine out yet because we've got an old house, there's a form online to fill out to request that that water service replacement. Are we only working off that, or have we done any mandatory replacements without homeowners or property owners?
No, everything has been currently, if if a resident feels like they want to replace their lead service line, that they can apply for the program. The only time that we have it mandatory is when we have a leak on a on a service line, and then based on the the rules that the I E P A has, that the governor signed into into law, then that service has to be replaced.
Okay, and then I guess this might be for council, so if 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 we are not on pace to meet the replacement deadline, is not home rule, do you think we can just say, you're getting your
I don't think you can say that. I mean, look, I don't think every community is going to be in a position to abide by that timing. It wouldn't surprise me if there were extensions, but I think every community has an obligation to make a good faith effort to comply. I would recommend we do everything we can to comply.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Okay, we're gonna do a voice vote on this.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kavin?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
All right. Nine in the affirmative, one absent. Motion passes. Last item, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a professional engineering services agreement with Engineering Solutions for Design and Bidding Specifications for Water Treatment Plant HVAC System Rehabilitation at a cost not to exceed $33,900. Any Moved by Alderman Kilburg, seconded by Marx. Questions? Oh, yeah.
Sure. So again, for your consideration is a professional engineering services agreement to provide bid documents and plans for the rehabilitation and modernization of the HVAC system at the water treatment plant. The water treatment plant has a complex HVAC system for heating and cooling that is 15 years old and has had several failures in the past year. And again, we still have Superintendent Van Gescum here to answer any additional questions.
Alderman Kilburg?
We were shared some preliminary information as relates to our facility study. And as it relates to the water treatment plant, is this was this one of the big ticket items as it might relate to the water treatment plant? I mean, it's a fairly new facility, so.
I think it was just general, the aging.
Right, I understand that.
Was noted, but nothing in nothing specific and related to the H V A system, I believe, that was looked at in that study based on my memory.
Okay.
What I recall.
Do we have other major expenditures out there potentially as well, just to refresh our memories on that?
Nothing. I I wouldn't consider them major. I would consider them to be just starting to see more and more equipment failures just due to age. So we're we're having to to budget more and more replacement for for certain items out there, but as far as the, like, let's say, the R O units themselves, we're not seeing anything major with that or with the pressure filters or things like that. Yes, I I heard you knocking on the wood. So, yes, but there there's definitely, the list is growing longer that of things that need to be replaced.
And as far as the life expectancy of H V A C, 15 to 20 years is pretty normal, I would expect.
Yeah, it's just time has gone by quick, so it kind of was kicking the tail for me. I didn't
What kind of unit do we currently have in place?
Oh, boy. I want to say train, but I could be wrong.
And what are we looking to replace what we have with?
If I don't have it in the agreement here, I know it is in their review that they provided to me. Let me let me
No, that's fine. That's fine. I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No problem. That's all I had.
Any other questions? All right, here are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Nine in favor or one absent? Motion passes. Any new public comment or new business? Nothing? All right. Motion to adjourn? Marx, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.